Good morning. It is 10:00 AM on September 19, 2023. We'll call to order the meeting of the Story County Board of Supervisors. Please stand with me if you're able and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation of our God. In his quote, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to adopt today's agenda? So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded Merkin. Aye.
Edens.
Aye.
Beesaw, aye. Now it's time for public comment number one. This comment period is for the public to address topics on today's agenda. Anyone wishing to make public comment? You can raise your hand on Zoom or step forward to the table. Seeing no one raised their hand or stepped forward, we'll close public comment number one and move to agency reports. We have emergency management quarterly report. Morning Melissa.
Morning.
Morning.
Good morning, everybody.
Morning.
I just want to touch on just a few highlights. Since our last report, we all made it through RagBri. Some of, we did conduct an after-action review with the county public safety partners. We did some of the, the two biggest items that came out of that was that our radio system did definitely make communications easier. It allowed for connectivity between local and state agencies that worked well. One area for improvement that was identified was lack of communication for the overall planning process with RagBri and Discovery Ames. We did take a look at costs to the county, county personnel and equipment time. Totalled about $26,000. I think that number is a little bit low because not everybody was necessarily documenting specific time, working on specific parts of the plan. Just to kind of balance that, Ames and ISU also reported to me that they believe they had about $32,000 worth of cost for the public safety issues during that time. And RagBri offers up for overnight communities, $15,000 worth of funding. And for pass-through communities such as we had Slater would have received $5,000 as part of RagBri. But overall, it went well. We would have hoped for not as hot of weather, but it did go well. Hazard mitigation planning update. We conducted our last planning meeting with the contractor. And communities are starting to focus on developing their hazard mitigation strategies, their new ones. We expect the first draft of the updated plan probably October or November timeframe, where we will review that and then send it out for public comment after that. Our intent is to wrap up the planning process with the contractor by January of 2024, to allow the state of Iowa and FEMA enough time to review that before our current plan expires. September is National Preparedness Month. One of the campaigns that we are taking on from emergency management is to be aware. We're conducting a Story County Iowa Alerts Registration Campaign, trying to encourage folks to get signed up to receive those emergency messages from a trusted authority. Our goal is an overall 3% increase of households in Story County to be registered on the system. We are starting to see individual registrations increased by about 3% across most communities. So we will continue to monitor that. I'd like to thank the board for allowing us to use Bryce to help develop, work with Samantha and develop the public information campaign. At the end of the month, we'll look at the numbers. And the community that has the most new registrations by percentage will receive a little award in bragging rights for the year. And then we will finish up National Preparedness Month with a countywide drill of the Story County Iowa Alert System on September 29th at 10:00 AM. Couple of weeks ago, I participated in the Secretary of State election tabletop exercise down in Ankeny from the county IT Auditor's Office, of course, and the sheriff attended. Really was a great time to have a discussion and understand everybody's roles and responsibilities and priorities. They did an exercise that there is significant storm event during an election. But great discussion. I think it definitely opened some eyes from different sides of it. Last week, I met with Representative Feenstra staffer to discuss support for a Federal Emergency Operations Center grant to start looking at improvements for our current, for the EOC. This grant does require congressional apportionment. The official word I just received back yesterday is that Representative Feenstra will not be giving us a congressional apportionment request for the EOC grant. Through that community projects grant capability that they have at the federal level. I am exploring other options, but they are rather limited. Really no other grant opportunities that will fully pay for the project in one shot.
And, you know, can I interrupt? Is, this is because of Representative Feenstra's opposition or dislike in general to that, that funding?
Yes.
Because of any lack of support of emergency management?
Correct. Yeah. He does not, in, in looking, he does not do congressional apportionments for any project that I can, that I have seen through his website. He has offered letters of support for other things, but there's just not other grant opportunities out there that allow us to try to, to secure the funding. Most of the grant opportunities that we have are for equipment through emergency management and do not provide any assistance for any construction. So we're going to continue down this road and have a discussion with our commission in October about what we're going to do going forward. On September 28th, we are hosting a business continuity planning class at the Ames Chamber. Thank you to Ames Chamber for be willing, for being willing to host that for us at no charge. We appreciate that opportunity to be able to partner with them. This next planning cycle, one of our emergency support functions we will be working on is ESF-15, which is Public Information External Affairs. So we will be working with the county EOC PIOs to try to look at improving processes along with the PIOs from other entities across the county. One last thing that I have, our intern Samantha Sharper has been nominated and is a finalist for the US Navy Federal ROTC All-American Student of the Year program as a cadet at the ISU Army ROTC program. She's one of 15 finalists, the only one from Iowa. And they evaluate students on leadership, military excellence, scholarship and service. She's not real clear when she will find out if she is, if she becomes the student of the year for the Army, but we're still really proud of her accomplishment and very excited for her as she goes through this process. So those are just the real high highlights. If anybody has any questions about anything else in the report?
That's incredible news.
Yes, we were, we were very, very tickled to hear that, that she was, that was accomplishment. They will select one student from each branch. So there will be four students that will be honored in December or January at the Military Bowl Game. She gets a trip to DC with her whole family if she would be selected to be honored as the ROTC student.
I know she's done such great work for you in the last few years. I've just, I've been amazed at how much she just steps up the plate.
Yes.
She has got great skills.
She has been an amazing asset to our office now going into her second year with us. So we're going to miss her when she graduates.
Yeah, don't let her do that. Hey, I did have one question.
Yes.
For our Iowa Alert, she said 12% of households are signed up with a goal of 15. Those relate to people who live within incorporated cities as well as the county. I mean Ames, I'm thinking.
That's everything because with the way the Story County Iowa Alert system works, it's tied to an address. And so all of the unincorporated areas are going to have a community that goes with them. So each community would also cover the unincorporated areas
Okay.
of the county as well. It just depends on what community their address comes from.
I was just thinking, if only 12% of the 96,800 people we have in the county now, I think it's almost 99, pardon, are, are enrolled in this, a lot of those people are in Ames.
There is, and I don't have the number for the amount of people in Ames that are registered right at this moment, but I can tell you Ames is not leading the percentage. Some of our smaller communities are actually leading this most significant change as we've gone through this.
Here's the idea I had, was going towards. Could we get something in the city of Ames newsletter about enrolling in Story County Iowa Alerts?
We have shared it with them. I believe they have sent, they have posted it through some of their social media. But all the communities had posters. Bryce and Samantha delivered posters to every strategic places in every community. And we asked the communities to share it in newsletters or bulletin boards or other types of public information spots across the county.
I have not seen it in their newsletter and I look at it whenever time I get it. So I just, I just wanted to seem like people there should know it's not just for rural Story County, it's for personal communities, it's for the city as well. Cause Ames doesn't have a similar system that does this. I mean, this is all Story County alerts, so they should get it. Okay. Thank you.
I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Um, my only comment about Iowa Alerts is I remember hearing with the fires in Maui that one of the things that they leaned on to notify people was alerts on their phones. And because the fires had knocked everything out, that was another challenge getting information out to people. So I'm assuming there have been conversations about even though we're doing Iowa Alerts, we're still going to do XYZ to make sure that people are notified.
Yeah, it's just another tool for us to be able to get that information out. We would, of course, still be using the, the good old emergency, the EAS system, Emergency Alert System that comes out through television. Something as unique as that happened in Maui, we would probably be relying on some of our first responders. It may come to a point where some of our first responders are going to need to go through the, go through the communities with their PA systems to ensure that people are notified depending on, on what the nature of the emergency is, if we have those outages. Yeah, we have plans in place. It's just one additional tool to be able to get that message out quickly.
Awesome. And then do the schools have a separate planning, hazard mitigation planning? System or?
No, the schools, the schools participate in the countywide hazard, in the countywide hazard, hazard mitigation plan. They are considered a jurisdiction.
Okay.
So all schools are participating except for Collins Maxwell.
Okay.
But all the school districts are participating and providing hazard mitigation strategies as part of the countywide plan.
Okay.
They do have, yes, they do have their own emergency planning requirements through the Department of Education. Some schools have their own mass notification systems that they will rely on to share any emergency messaging that, that needs to go out.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you for your work. Uh, next we have consideration of requests from Camelot Theater Foundation for $150,000. Good morning.
We're back again.
Good to see you.
Good to see you guys. We, this is just kind of informal. I hope that's okay. We didn't prepare anything. Just wanted to give you an update and you know, we're going forward. We would like to go forward with the CAT grant. So I guess that's our main reason for being here. Just to remind you, our mission or vision for the Camelot is to renovate it and have it as a multi-use facility for Story County, Eastern Story County, the whole. And if we can go further than that, that would be great too. So I will start out kind of with our grants. I've got my glasses on here. We, since we met last, we've gotten three more grants. We were turned down on two, but we're, and we're currently working on four other grants. And as far as the CAT grant goes, we're, if we receive some support from the county, we would like to go forward with that in January. We've reached out and talked to the, some utilities department that has people that can help with grants and everything. And they said that they would be willing to help write that CAT grant as well as the Nevada Foundation, who's, they've done the CAT grant before for their scorn door. Do you have anything else on the grants?
I think that covers it on the grants. Yeah.
How are you on your overall goal, your total goal that you're trying to reach?
Do you have that, Melissa?
I don't. I think we are past 50%.
Which we have, well, it originally started at 2 million. I think we're about at 2.2 now because in the
I know, we're not 50% and we're probably about 700.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you. You're speaking in the microphone.
Yeah, I, I don't have the specific number, but I think it's about 700 and some thousand dollars.
The three grants you've received are $700,000?
No, no.
No, that would be everything including in-kind, so.
What's, what's the total amount you're, I, I just can't remember from the last time. I'm sorry.
No, that's fine. 2.2 is what, it was originally 2 million. But, and as we're going to go into the apartments, they have been completely gutted and we have bids coming back in. And I think we have about 85% of the bids in.
Yes, we're still working on a few trades to come in, but most of them are in.
So just with those figures, we probably figure we might need another 200,000. Just that's a guesstimate because we still have to tear out the wall between the Camelot and the Bistro. So we're just kind of assuming with construction, construction costs that it's going to go up just a little bit. So.
But total, but approximate total that you've been able to raise so far is 700 and, I'm sorry.
It's almost 800,000 is what.
And that includes the three grants? I, I'm sorry, I'm a lot better when I'm seeing all these numbers on a piece of paper than having them go back and forth. So I'm trying to write them down.
No, that's fine. I, I'm sorry. I would have sent something to you. I didn't even.
Well, yeah, and I didn't have time to go back and dig up what you gave us before to look at. So 700,000 does include the three grants?
I do, I don't believe so. It's, I think we're at 800,000 with that. And I can email that information to you.
You know, it'd be nice if you could do a sheet, a status sheet of where you are right now and email it to us. I would, it would help me a lot.
Absolutely. So as far as the apartments go, they're almost ready to start. Well, as soon as we get the final bids in, we had United Day, United Way came and helped to get the final. What do I want to say?
Demo removal, the debris, the rubble that was there.
Yeah.
Um, so yeah, I think we have really strong community support. We had a volunteer team from Story City, American Packaging involved in that. And another demonstration of community sport, support is a coming up Donut Dash is unit, Runners United Nevada is supporting the Camelot for their charity donation for that.
So the United Way Day of Carrying, the work that they did was that to clear out the apartment?
Yes.
The rubble in the apartment? Okay.
Yes, it was a lot of hard work.
And it's all one, is it, is it all one project, the apartment and the theater? Or have you got it broken out into separate projects?
We have several phases. So the apartment is a phase and the expansion into the north building would be a separate phase with the bistro kitchen, the bathrooms, and then the kind of opening up the space in between and then the the stairway structure that would go up to the rooftop and the rooftop that would go over the entire structure, including Harmony Closet.
Gotcha.
So that's, and those are the two next phases that we're working on.
But the theater itself, is that complete? Cause I know there have been shows and movies and everything. Is the theater itself done?
No, no.
Okay.
That one probably needs the least amount of work, would you say?
Yeah, so we do have plans to do some stage renovation work and theater, updated theater seating. And you know, tying it in with the bistro. So more of a theater dining seating and kind of changing the flooring a little bit.
And we're trying to make it as multi-use functional as possible. Our goal is to get seats that can be removable, like movie seats, but they're removable. So you could have it, you know, a dance floor, I guess, or whatever. If you need a floor or have seats in there. And then have underneath the balcony, we'll have tables and chairs so that the bistro will probably be small, but if a corporate, corporation wants to come in and have a function, we have more space. Or if we want to do a dinner theater or something like that. So just trying to make it as multiple, multiple, multi-use as possible.
And could you just remind me, who owns the buildings now?
The Camelot Theater Foundation, which is a 501(c)(3).
Nonprofit, okay.
Yes.
And how much are you looking to ask for for your CAT grant?
So we have gone back and forth whether we should do this in different phases, but we're just told to do the whole project. And so we're looking at asking for 600,000?
And the city of Nevada is contributing?
They have contributed 150,000.
Okay. And what other, can you tell them that's the other significant contributions you've had?
The most significant would be come from our grants right now, which is we had a downtown housing grant and a catalyst grant to the state of Iowa. There's a couple of grants that we've tried to, but because of Nevada recently got, I don't know how recently, got, is, and now annexed with Ames, we don't qualify.
Oh, the rural grant.
The border between, yeah.
Yeah, that's a concern.
I shouldn't say annexed, yeah, yeah. So we've missed out on some grants because of that. So, but we're still working on them. Any more questions on the building itself? Otherwise, I can tell you some of the things we've been doing to try to increase awareness, I guess. So we've had some open mics. People are afraid to come up to the open mic, but it was the last one we had, or the one before, it was pretty much all ran by kids. So that was kind of fun. They did the soundboard and they did the mic thing introducing everybody. So we've had some teams come in for team bonding to watch a movie, just trying to get the youth in there so that they know what, what the Camelot is because they've never used it. It wasn't in use for them. Ricochet Band, the 1990 star band, if you know who that is, let's see, movies. And then of course we had RV TV. If you guys saw the band on the marquee.
We have some theaters, some plays coming up. So we have a local Crossfade Productions has approached us to do a a fun theater event. And then also Story Community Theater is working with us to do a youth play in April.
Great. I was hoping that.
Excited about that. Yes.
Connected with them.
Yes.
I want to go back and ask you questions again. I'm on the money, okay?
Yeah.
Okay, your whole project is 2.2 million. You've raised 800 so far, which leaves 1.4 million. You're asking 600 for a CAT grant, which leaves 800,000. What, and some of that is if, if Story County grants you some money, that 150 might be there.
Right.
What's your plan to get the rest of that?
We plan to continue with our grant writing and then we will be hitting the streets. We have not gone to the, and we've gone to a few industries, the bigger ones here in town, but we need to go out to the local businesses and hit them up and private citizens.
So you got at least 650,000 more to raise according to my numbers.
Yes.
That's about what you're thinking.
Yep. And we are also hoping that the once we get the apartments done, we can get those rented and that will be some kind of income as well. For the sustainability.
But that will be after all the construction is done. That's not going to help you with construction.
Well, we hope to get that, that's our first phase to get that done before. So we hope.
The, the second part is of the construction is the bistro and all of that. But you expect to have the apartments done and livable before you start that, that phase?
Or, I don't know.
Ahead of that phase.
Completely done, but yeah, yes.
What, what is your annual operating budget going to look like and what's your revenue sources? How, do you have that worked out yet?
I think we, we do, and I apologize, but that's with our treasurer and I did not bring that and I don't have it in my head, but I can, I can provide that. It exists.
I would be interested in that, you know, because I mean, that's the other thing is you're going to look at what's the long-term, you know, business plan for it. And I don't believe we've seen that before. I'd be interested in.
Okay. Well, the business model will be eventually, once there, a bistro exists, that we'd be finding an entrepreneurial venture, somebody that's interested in running the theater and the bistro. So we would be really running, maintaining the building on lease income.
Have you talked to anybody about the feasibility of that? If there'd be interest in, by those businesses?
We, I have, well, I've had conversations with people that are like going to DMAC culinary school and somebody that wants to come back in the next year to do it. They had asked if we were going to be putting in like the stove and stuff like that, which I think we would because that would help them. We've tossed around the idea of being kind of like an incubator business for somebody so that they could keep, because we don't want the bistro to be huge except for like if we do a corporate event, you know, just a small. I don't know, less than 10 items, but it might be a good starter for somebody. And that's I guess our hope. Does that answer the question?
Well, I was just wondering, there are firms that, you know, manage venues and I'd wondered if you had talked, professional firms, I'd wondered if you'd talked with any of them.
We, no.
Okay.
Do you have a deadline of, or where you want to be to start doing more construction with the bistro? You know, all of that. I'm, I'm just thinking.
What's our timeline?
Yeah, kind of your timeline. You're at your 800,000 now of what you can complete. Starting with that, are you waiting to get a more revenue identified before you start doing more construction?
Well, we have a a grant that we'd like to access to start the phase to move into the north building. There, you know, we're working still on acquiring that building because there's been, it's kind of a puzzle, like how the, the person that's the tenant that's occupying it now is moving into another building that's also getting renovated. So while we thought we'd be further down on that, you know, things have just been pushed back because of construction on that issue. So we need to have a firm date when that person can move out and we can take over ownership of the building. So that is a bit fuzzy, but we think it's going to happen in the next couple of months. And then also Harmony Clothing Closet is hoping to get the roof replaced as soon as possible. So we're really working out the financial details on being able to have the project, that phase funded so that we can get started.
And the, the CAT grant is due in January.
January, it comes out again. And it, just to remind you, we're working with Harmony Closet. We're doing their roof and we're taking over part of their building, their, so that we can have bathrooms and accessible bathrooms, make them a little bit bigger. So we have. Make them a little bit bigger. So we have a timeline. It's just been pushed back, I guess, a little bit, six months or so. But I think that's part of construction is what I'm learning.
So what I've got is that you're going to send us some kind of an update showing the money and the source of the money that you have so far.
Yes.
And what your total budget is and something if if you had a timeline, I think that'd be good to see.
Okay.
And also your operating budget. That's what I had in my notes of things that would be good for us to to look at. I appreciate this update, but now I realize that's kind of informal. So but having this information and maybe giving you another month or two, you're going to have some more specifics.
Okay.
Come back.
If we were to, if we were to support them in their effort to apply for the CAT grant, we could we could commit to supporting the application. And if for some reason they don't get the CAT grant, then that hundred and fifty that we would be agreeing to match. That wouldn't, I mean, then that would come back and the and the the process could start over again. Am I correct in that? And because through the process of applying for the CAT grant, we're going to be working through all of these same questions. I guess my question, my my thought is if can we not support their application now? And if they if they don't get the CAT grant, then then that support would come back to the county and we and we could have future conversations about what your needs might be and how the county could support.
Well, I was confused as to whether we were just getting an update today or this was a, can you commit today? I didn't understand that we were being asked to commit today.
Yeah, I think I think I think it was a request.
Consideration.
I think those are all really important questions. Obviously, I think they're very important questions. But I I also know they've got to get their, they've got to get their application together and submitted. That's just, that's my thought is.
Well, I think if there is a motion on it, you make it contingent, you know, saying that it's for the match. And if they do not get the grant, the money stays with us. So it's just doesn't go to them because then they can come come back to us for discussion. I think that's what you're saying, but I think that would have to be part of the motion so that we're clear that we'd support, you'd support a match, but.
Right. It's contingent on on the approval of the of the grant.
Right.
Yeah.
And what would the source of the mesh be? Do you have a suggestion?
Well, you could do out a general fund. I know lost has about a hundred and thirty eight thousand of unassigned funds. We asked Lisa Markley.
Be part of it from lost and part of it from general fund.
Yeah. There's I'm not hearing her yell or anything, so.
I don't think there's enough ARPA money left.
I would say general fund.
I think it needs to be general fund. It's the cleanest.
Sure.
Yeah. Do you mind speaking into a microphone? Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Yes, it can come from both.
Okay.
If you want to put it that way, that's totally fine.
Okay. So we could do half from lost and half from general fund. Okay, okay.
Put that in your motion. I know, but I just that's I just wanted to know if that was a possibility or if that mucks up accounting.
No. Okay. I'm I'm happy to make a motion unless one of you would like to make a motion.
I'll make a motion. I'd make a motion that we support the hundred and fifty thousand dollar request for the Camelot Theater Foundation as a match for the CAT grant contingent on them receiving the CAT grant and that half of the hundred and fifty thousand comes out of lost and half comes out of the general fund.
Second. Moved in seconded, Heddens.
Aye.
Merkin.
Aye.
Basil. Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck. We can't wait for the the next update.
Thank you.
Moving now to consideration of minutes from September twelve, twenty twenty three.
I move approval.
Second.
Moved in seconded, Merkin.
Aye.
Heddens.
Aye.
Basil. Aye. We have no personnel actions today. Consent agenda.
I move approve of consent agenda, consent agenda items as listed.
Second. Moved in seconded, Heddens.
Aye.
Merkin.
Aye.
Basil. Aye. No public hearing items. Under additional items, we have discussion and consideration of modifications to Homebase Iowa. Welcome home to Story County Relocation Assistance Program. Good morning, Leanne.
Morning. Before the board for consideration this morning are a couple of changes to the Homebase Iowa Relocation Assistance Grant Program that are recommended by staff. Over the past couple of years, the usage has been minimal. And so we were looking at ways to make some slight modifications to the program to encourage participation. Again, the Welcome Home to Story County Relocation Assistance Program is part of the Homebase Iowa Program and as part of Story County's workforce development initiatives. The two main changes that are outlined in the memo that was put on today's agenda is to increase the proposed assistance from up to twenty five hundred dollars to up to three thousand dollars. And then extend the length of time that applicants can apply from twelve months to twenty four months. And that last change really does recognize that there is a gap from the time that they are made aware of the program. And then they actually apply for the program or finding some are coming out of that twelve month are beyond that twelve month window. So they're not eligible. This would possibly increase usage of the program annually, the board does budget ten thousand dollars as a placeholder for the Homebase Iowa Program. We're not recommending that change at this point. That would be consistent going forward. If it is approved today, there are some other changes staff will make, will revise the applications, revise our materials accordingly, work with AEDC staff for an outreach campaign as well. And I outlined a number of those strategies and steps in the memo. Are there any questions?
I do have a question. I know you said that you it's been kind of minimal usage in the past. If you're looking to see about increasing and yet you are increasing from twelve months to twenty four months. I'm just wondering, would you have more usage still at that twenty five? I mean, just I was just trying to think, would you think you might have more usage still at that twenty five hundred level by just expanding the timeframe?
You could possibly. We're trying to incentivize it a little bit greater. And so the staff that got together to discuss that that would those two in combination would provide the additional incentive.
Gotcha. Okay, thanks.
I don't, I don't have any data to confirm that just the change from twelve to twenty four months will have a noticeable impact. I think.
You know what other counties?
It's kind of across the board. I know Brett looked into, I think there was one county that was three thousand, somewhere two thousand. A lot of cities have Homebase Iowa relocation programs. A lot of those do do not have the the relocation assistance package like we do. They have more of a hotel expense expenses when people are looking for jobs. There are varying approaches across account or the state of Iowa.
I I think anything we can do to encourage its use and and make it more accessible, the better. Any other questions?
I do not.
Did you have a number of how many applicants we had had? You have, or how many, how many claims we had, how many grants we had given?
We've done one in the past calendar year.
All been approved?
I have to ask Sandra because I've not been doing it for a past calendar year. Okay, two to three approved through the process.
Thank you.
So two to three to approve.
That were approved in the past year.
Right. So if we have a cap of ten thousand and I'm not suggesting we increase that, you move it up to three thousand, you're going to end up with probably the most of three people accessing that.
And not my experience has been not everyone has gone up to the maximum. We've had some that have done, left some on the table, just done appliance purchase or whatever it may be.
Gotcha.
And that ten thousand dollars has always been viewed just like the facade grant, just as a placeholder. If we've gone below that or above that, there's been flexibility as allowed by the budget.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. That's helpful. I have no further questions and I'm ready to make a motion.
Great. Wonderful. Thank you.
I would move approval of the modifications to the Homebase Iowa. Welcome home to Story County Relocation Assistance Program as proposed by staff.
Second.
Moved in seconded, Merkin.
Aye.
Heddens.
Aye.
Basil. Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
We've no departmental reports. Under other reports, we have discussion and direction on modification to the agreement with the city of Zering for the water main improvement project design work.
And Greg is going to come join me and I'm going to just kick this off just for the benefit of the discussion. This is under other reports because the action today is just direction from the board, whether or not you do in whether or not you would like to direct staff to draft modification, an amendment outlining such modifications as requested today to the grant agreement between City of Zering and Story County. As you know, this is ARPA funded, and so it's been about two years since the board first received the applications, which is amazing in and of itself. We've been seeing some changes to the proposed scope of services, as you know. And the way we've been doing is the applicant or representative has been here to present those changes. And then you would direct me to go forward and make modifications and then present it back to applicant and then on your consent agenda. So that's just a quick process and I'm going to turn it over to Greg now.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So before you, as a request, I was directed to by the city of Zering to request a change in their ARPA funds that were allocated. The original application, of course, predates my time in this position. However, what is before the community is, I want to say several unforeseen changes that were done with current projects that were not known at the time of the original application. So the original application, just a reminder for anyone that's watching or yourselves, it was for engineering and design specifications. That was the approved allocation. The request from the city of Zering is to change that to actual shovel ready, current projects underway. And in the memo, you'll see the examples given for the several projects, but I'll just highlight a couple of them for you. One, the business expansion that was unforeseen. Originally, that building expansion for that new employer in Zering was designed according to specifications by their contractor and it was supposed to be adequate with the current lines. When the current lines were tapped, it was found to impact not only the current facilities there for business owners, but also the local nearby several residents were impacted as well. They had to enlarge the main that was not foreseen. So that was additional cost. The current, I'm sorry, the new building owner that is in the community now is also looking to expand already. He is seeing that much growth, so he is very, very adamant. He's going to need additional resources as well, which requires an increase in the main. At the same time, these projects started, the Iowa DNR came through in an unexpected process on the INI project. As you are well aware, they are tapping communities to step up their efforts on water quality. They had over a hundred manholes inspected in the community. Over a hundred were found, I'm sorry, over a hundred manholes were found to be having issues. A hundred manholes grading scale from cracked pavement seals, holes in the in the manholes themselves, rust, structural integrity, the whole gamut in the hundred that were inspected and found to be in need of attention. So the city targeted ten manholes. Those are the ones that have the highest risk for INI. They were seeing significant increase in, I want to say intake when they have a major storm event come through. Public safety was also an issue and also staff safety. They were the top priority. So that was another ten manholes that needed to be replaced and sealed and redone on the on that side that was unforeseen. And then lastly, the third project as well. The the key thing I want to emphasize here and the city wishes to emphasize, these are projects they have either started or have the ability to start immediately. So they are looking to have a completion date of spring of twenty twenty four. They're not asking for any additional funds. The there's already been a request submitted to Leanne. Those funds are already approved under the current guidelines for design and engineering. That's approximately. So approximately that amount is current under the current guidelines approved. The rest amount that's already been allocated will be directed strictly to construction and and basically to get it done. The city has already inspected. The city has Bolton Mink on contract and retainer ready to execute it. It's more along the lines of permission and questions and answers from the board of supervisors.
I guess I'm I'm confused. The total amount that was awarded was one thirty four, three thirty. That was the total amount that was awarded. So are you, is the request for more in addition to that one? Because when I added up, we're short thirty six thousand seventy five dollars and eighty cents.
It's totals one sixty nine.
Yeah, the amount I cited was the amount of the total projects that were above and beyond was originally. They're not asking for that amount. They're just showing you specifically what has been in addition to the community. So they're not asking for any change of the ARPA. They're just showing you the amount of increases impacted to the community through these projects.
And and they're going to take the, if we approve it, their intent is to take the whole one thirty four, three thirty and apply it to these projects rather than to do the engineering, the things we had before. So it almost seems to me like the question of draining the swamp and finding yourself up to your neck in alligators.
Correct. When when the projects, when the original application was made and granted, this was before my time and the research I've been able to find. This was the best intention to spec and engineer this out and then tackle the projects they knew were coming. And however, like we are fully aware, once you start peeling back a hundred years of infrastructure, issue followed issue followed issue.
Right.
So the these projects that were found in the process were above and beyond the scope. And they were also additionally above and beyond what they thought was needed, but they were found absolutely required. So they want to target INI to help the DNR mandates. They want to target the looping projects to help with sealing of another cracked water main. So they can how did the public works director prove it to make it quicker repairs and upgrades? So that way, if there's another water main break in the middle of December, they can isolate it, get it tested and and not have to go through the whole boiling process and and help public pressure on the on the water mains as well. So it's really just to upgrade the current systems physically instead of engineering specking future projects.
So their future projects goals will just have to be on hold and.
Well, the the target on this is we are targeting the new farm bill coming out with the USDA. So our process in my work with the city of Zering has been to, we'll solve this problem and we're going to do community visioning in January of twenty twenty four. You know, create a CIP capital improvement program. What do you know? What don't you know? And work with Bolton Mink. I'm working directly now with their contact at Bolton Mink to streamline the process, if you will, so that way we can give a firm plan over the next five years and and have a set.
I think that's good because I was just recalling back when we did look at their original application. And I think we went with engineering because we weren't sure if they had a good needs assessment.
Yeah, right. Yeah, right.
And and if they've got the the plan and the capability, I mean, we're 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 going to take the ARPA money we gave to them and say, this is your, this is your alligators, right? You know, get rid of the alligators.
Yeah.
But the drain, the swamp is going to have to be, they're going to have to work with an engineer and get some other planning. We won't have money to help them with that then because we will have used it to.
Correct. The analogy I used was, okay, you you opened this, you opened your sewers and found teenage mini ninja turtles. You know, what what else is down there? You don't know at this point.
Right.
Define that too, is one of the things with the CIP Bolton Minks already on retainer. Define that too, is one of the things with the CIP. Bolton Mink's already on retainer. So they've already scoped, they're already visual, videoing a whole bunch of the infrastructure too. And having the CIP curated over the next five years is going to help the current city and council and the new ones coming on after November to help them visioning and budget moving forward.
And they have a plan for whatever, what, any expenses that will come through that to cover those expenses.
Any, anything that we can be found visually to the best of the ability of Bolton Mink. You know, there's always that deep frost or, or the polar freeze that comes through or the unforeseen crack in the main.
Right.
But they will have a five-year CIP design for twenty twenty-four moving forward.
That sounds like a good plan, a needed plan that they need to have.
And all three of the projects listed in the memo are what, what you expect will be completed by spring twenty twenty-four?
Correct. Some have already started. The manholes haven't been started. A few other aspects of the project haven't been started, but all of them are targeted for spring of twenty twenty-four. Yes.
I have a question for Leanne. Sorry. Sometimes I get a little, um, nervous when I hear the project is already started. Can you fund it, please? But we've, you know, and that's because sometimes there are guidelines that you can't fund something that somebody's already started and committed to. Do you think we're okay with ARPA because of the fact that we already assigned the hundred and thirty-four, three thirty to Zering for water infrastructure?
I think so. I think it's falling under that. It's going to be the same expense category.
Okay.
I'm checking with Lisa too.
I, I just need, yeah, I saw her nod. Thank you. For the record, Lisa Markley nodded.
I think the issue is that it's not going to any debt service. Because that is something that, that we can't.
Exactly.
Yeah. I, I can tell you, one, none of the projects started till after the original allocation was awarded. And two, this is not to fund anything to do with the budget issues that were done in January of this year. This is strictly infrastructure projects.
We understand that and appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay. Any other questions?
Good work. Thank you.
I would make the motion on the, just, oh, that's right. Yeah. Sorry. Yeah.
So we'll, 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 we'll give, uh, staff direction to move forward with the changes for Zering's ARPA application.
Right.
Will do. And then we'll be back on your consent agenda probably in a few weeks.
Okay.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Greg. And Leanne, thank you for your good work on this.
Uh, any upcoming agenda items?
I think so.
Okay. Moving to public comment number two, comments from the public on items not on this agenda. The board may not take any action on comments due to requirements of open meetings law, but may do so in the future. Anyone wishing to make public comment, you can step forward to the table or raise your hand on Zoom. Seeing no one step forward or raise their hand, we'll close public comment number two. Uh, move to liaison, liaison assignments, committee meeting updates and announcements from the supervisors. Supervisor Heddens.
Yeah, I think we had a good discussion last night, um, with the, um, some from the medical community that joined us for the opioid discussion. Um, I'm here the rest of the day today. Tomorrow afternoon, I'm at, um, the safety day training. Thursday, I have a HERDA meeting, an aging resources meeting and a school resiliency meeting in Nevada. Uh, Friday I have on the calendar strategic plan work. Um, there's a GIS brown or brown bag lunch. And then I have a MICA meeting. And, um, that's it for, for the week.
Supervisor Merkin?
I'll be here till about two o'clock today. I'm probably going to be working half days this week. Still recovering. So, um, I have a certain meeting on Thursday, probably work from home tomorrow, certain meeting Thursday, Friday strategic plan work and some other meetings. And I will be available by phone or text if I'm not in the office.
Great. Um, this afternoon I have NACO Central Region Meeting, Story County Housing Trust Board and SIRHA this evening. And then, uh, Thursday, I'm, I will be on KHOI in the morning. So anyone who has anything they want shared on the radio, please let me know. And also strategic planning discussion Thursday morning.
Friday morning.
Friday morning. Thank you. Sorry. I've just got a, I've just got meetings all over the place. Um, Friday I also have Central Iowa Juvenile Detention and Story County College Access Network. That would be, that's it. Moving to, uh, closed session. So we'll move into closed session pursuant to code section twenty-one point five.
Would you like a motion?
Yes, please.
I move that we go into closed session.
Second.
Moved in seconded, Merkin.
Aye.
Heddens.
Aye.
Basil, aye. Thank you. We were going to come back out of closed session. Uh, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'm so moved.
Moved in seconded, Heddens.
Aye.
Merkin.
Aye.
Basil, aye. We're adjourned. Thank you.